We're going to have a drawing for place on ballot. A notice is hereby given of a drawing to determine the order in which the names of candidates are to be printed on the ballot for the election to be held on November 6, 2018, in the city of Florisville, Texas. The drawing will be held at 6 o'clock PM on August 23rd, 2018, at the Lotto de Leon Events Center located at Highway 97 West, Florisville, Texas. If I can have Ricky come up, please. So, the candidates or the positions that there will be is for Mayor, Council Place 1 and Council Place 2. So, for Mayor, we have Cecilia Gonzalez-Dipple.
Yes.
And Mario Morones. And Place 2 on the ballot will be Cecilia Gonzalez-Dipple. For Council Place 1, we have David Johns. For Ballot Place 1 is David Johns. Ballot Place 2 is Marissa Jimenez. For Council Place 2, we have Nick Neeson. For Ballot Place 1 is Nick Neeson. And Ballot Place 2 is Gloria Martinez. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I now call this meeting to order of the Florisville City Council Regular Meeting for August the 23rd, 2018. Please, uh, excuse me, please rise for our invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Thank you to Pastor Gil for being with us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, for the invitation to give the invocation here this evening. You all just please pray with me. Lord God, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for the opportunity to come together this afternoon, Father God, and taking care of the business that is, that needs to be taken care of here in this city. We ask for blessings upon the current council members, blessings upon the candidates who will be voted on later this year. We ask to give each one of them their wisdom, knowledge that they need, Father God, as well as encouragement, and courage to do the right thing that needs to be. That you be their guiding force through the power of the Holy Spirit. And now I ask that everyone please pray with me, our Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Believe it is not temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory of it. Amen. God bless you. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and our Texas Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one individual. Thank you so much. And again, thank you to Pastor Gil from El Mecias United Methodist Church. We do have a quorum for tonight's meeting. In attendance, we have Councilman David Johns, Councilwoman Gloria Kent 2, myself, Sissy Gonzalez-Dipple as Mayor, Councilman Juan Ortiz, Councilman Nick Neeson, and Councilman Gerard Jimenez. Thank you so much. At this time, I'll open the floor to any citizens' comments pertaining to tonight's meeting, or pertaining to anything. Monica, they can't, the speakers are not working. Is that any better? Do you all hear anything? There you go.
Hello?
Yes. Test 1, 2? Okay, thank you so much. I'll open the floor to any citizens' comments. Okay? If not, we will move on to public hearing, our second public hearing, on the proposed 2018 property tax rate for the city of Florisville. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As you have the proposed notice, it is the same that we proposed for last year. And I'll have our Comptelita Camarena go over those notes for you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens. This is a public hearing, second public hearing for property tax rate for the city of Florisville. The tax rate prior year is .4431. For 2018, 2019, effective tax rate is .4444. The rollback rate is .4190. Staff is proposing to not increase the tax rate for fiscal year 1819, to continue the same rate as current.
May I interrupt? It's very important.
Okay.
It's per 100.
Yes.
Okay. But they don't know that. Thank you.
Okay. You can go ahead.
All right. The proposed rate, which is .4431 per 100, will provide the city a maintenance and operations of $33,0482 increase in revenue. That's the reason why staff is proposing this rate. We cannot go lower than that because we will not generate enough revenue for the city to operate. Do you all have any questions?
I know that we covered it in our last budget meeting, but Council, do you have any other questions from Mrs. Moreno concerning the proposed tax rate? Any citizens' comments pertaining to the tax rate? Mrs. Turner, do you have any comments during this hearing?
No, ma'am. We don't have any comments.
Okay. If no other comments, we will adjourn the special, the public hearing on the proposed 2018 property tax rate for the city of Florisville. Moving on to our second public hearing.
Sorry, Mayor, for the record, can you note the time?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, 6:09. Thank you.
Mayor, this concludes for that, for the tax rate?
Yes.
And the tax rate will remain the same? We're not raising no taxes for this year?
That will be up to the Council as we go forward in our next meeting to actually agree.
If I may?
This is only a public hearing.
Yes.
What it is, is we are informing the public, the citizens, and City Council that this is what the staff is proposing for the city to adopt. Once we come before you with a city ordinance to approve the rate, and then that's when it's approved. But right now, the only thing is information only.
Yes, I was just reiterating that we are not going to raise the taxes.
Correct.
They're staying the same, so that way the public knows that we are not raising taxes.
Correct.
That's our proposal. Okay. Okay. And Mrs. Moreno, I know you're moving on to the next one, is our fiscal year 2018-19 operating budget?
Yes. As I said, on the property tax rate, there will be an increase of $33,0482 revenue to maintenance and operations on general fund due to the not increasing that tax rate. Also, the public hearing is to let you all know that you have your budgets in front of you, and staff is proposing a total budget for governmental funds of $5,536,677, and for enterprise funds of $6,967,509. Totally, the entire budget for 2018-2019 will be $12,894,186. So, this public hearing is to inform the public and City Council that this is the total of budget that we're proposing, including the raise of revenue due to the not increasing taxes.
Okay.
If you all have any questions?
Oh, there's total again, $4 million more?
It's on your pocket? It's the second page, it's $12,894,186. The last column on the second page.
Okay, we got you.
Are we going to discuss this sometime?
Yes, ma'am. If you have any questions, Mayor will be prepared to discuss this at our budget meeting that we just approved for a special meeting on Tuesday, the 28th. So, if you have any questions or comments, at that time, we can take those questions.
I really have questions on some of these.
Yes, and since you just got it, you may want to look them over and be ready for our special meeting Tuesday night.
And I just want to go ahead and let you know that what reflects on this budget is what we have been talking through the workshops, and every changes that you all proposed, I went ahead and I made. So, if you have any questions on that, or any additional that we overlooked, and that would be the time to ask.
That will, or right now?
No, on the 28th. Yes. Because right now, it's too soon for you to look at it at home.
Any other comments or questions, or citizens' comments pertaining to the 2018-19 operating budget? Okay? If not, that concludes the public hearing on the operating budget at 6:13. Thank you. Moving on to old business, consideration and action to approve minute meetings for our special council meeting on August the 14th. Council, you do have those in front of you. I think you've had an opportunity to look those over. I'll give you just a moment or two if you need them, and then I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes, or make any changes.
Madam Mayor, if motion is, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes as prepared by Councilman Ortiz, seconded by Councilman Jimenez. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to our presentation and discussion, our financials for July, we are going to table that as recommended by staff. So, we're moving on to our presentation number 3B, Investment Quarterly Report.
Okay, I'm presenting financials, I'm sorry, the quarterly investment report for the month of June, ending on June, and that will include the month of April, May, and June. The total of investments at the end of June is $1,057,10330. That includes interest earned of $5,39902 per the quarter. That's an investment summary. Bank statements and interest earned total to $2,196,445.77. That includes $143.85 of interest earned. For the quarter, together, investments in bank accounts, the city holds at the bank $3,253,549 with an interest earned of $5,0542.87. Do you have any questions?
On that USDA store project, it's a negative of 829. It's on the June 2018, number 16.
Oh, that's payment spend. This column, it includes deposits and withdrawals, meaning that all the deposits minus the checks they have written, that is the total. But let me remind you that this money comes from USDA. So, every time that there is a payment done, we draw down the money from USDA. So, it's not really, the account is not really on the minus. What it is, is that we paid out some contracts.
Any other questions by the Council?
Is this different than the one that you usually give us?
That is the investment report. Normally, what you get is the financials, which we were not able to prepare, so we'll have that for you to review. Yes, ma'am, it is different. We have to give that to you quarterly, so that's not something that you receive all the time.
This is your cash flow. This is not revenues against expenditures. This is actually money held at the bank for the city.
Council, would you all like a few minutes to look these over? If you have any questions or comments?
And if you'd like, ma'am, we can put it on the next agenda when we bring the financials up, so we can bring that back, so we can discuss it at that time, if you'd like.
Okay. Any citizens' comments pertaining to our investment quarterly report? Okay. Council, if it's okay, we will go ahead and move on to new business concerning this, but we will be looking at it during our next meeting with our financials. And thank you. Moving on to new business, consideration and action on 4A to approve the purchase of a vat truck for water and wastewater. We have our wastewater superintendent here, I believe?
Good evening, Council. Ricky Karasco, the city of Florisville. We're looking into purchasing the vat truck. And we touched on it on a previous council meeting. I believe it was approved by the previous council a while back. We just want to bring it up to you guys and let you all know what we're using it for and what we really need it for. The recent project with the wastewater treatment plant expansion is handling the inflow, the INI, the inflow and infiltration that is coming in. We're able to tackle that problem. That does not take away from the problem in the collection system. So, this is a piece of equipment that we're looking into that will help us tackle that problem. Once this problem is, or the treatment plant is actually finished, there's still that issue of trying to be proactive in the collection system. Currently, we're only reactive. So, if there's a problem in the collection system, a manhole backs up, something, a line breaks, that's really the only time our crew goes out and cleans the line and just fixes that individual problem. With the purchase of the vat truck, we'll be able to start cleaning the system, start finding the problems, and just identifying where the focus and all the attention needs to be. That will help with the INI, the inflow and infiltration to not only the, not only the treatment plant, but overflows. That's pretty, pretty much the majority of it. Again, once, once we clean the lines and start televising, we'll have a lot more. This is basically just pulling the curtain behind and actually finding out how bad the collection system is, or if there are lines that need to be replaced, and if not, at least we did clean those and prevent some backups for the citizens and the residents.
Now, we did, Council, to remind you, we did approve this in our budget workshops. We did approve, and we're coming $50,000 out of the water fund and $50,000 out of the sewer fund. So, this is budgeted for in this fiscal year that we're doing right now, not the one we're planning on, the one we're in right now. But we wanted to come before Council to remind you, so that when the mayor signs that $100,000 check, she can say, yes, the Council did review it, took over it, but this was discussed. If you look at the letter from San Antonio River Authority with the intent for us to sell it to us, Ricky was very instrumental in negotiating that moving forward. And so, staff is recommending, but we need your final approval, so that we can process that $100,000 check.
What's the value of that truck that you were providing?
Well, it is a 2015, but purchased brand-new, the value of that truck, depending on all the extras that you do get on them, they run around $300,000 to $450,000. With it being a 2015, it is in pretty good condition. $100,000 is a great deal. They, if they were to resell it on the market, we're looking at a little under $300,000, about $250,000 to $300,000 on the market. With the River Authority there, they do have a program to help any kind of cities in their, or areas, counties in their basin. So, this is kind of a...
Did you shop around?
We did, we did price. This is a five-yard trainer, three yards, brand-new. We're looking around $200,000. Used, we're looking about $180,000 for three yards.
So, these things hold their value pretty good, huh?
Yeah, they do hold their value. You don't get too much wear and tear on them. Again, they're only used for local, local areas. They don't have that truck all over San Antonio. Again, the San Antonio River Authority has a small area that they patrol, but it is long overdue.
In the paperwork, it says a 2006 Sterling L. 7500.
Yes, I'm sorry, it was 2006. We did price two or three of them. The 2015 was way too much. I'm sorry about that.
That's a mileage on a 2006. You have that.
I do not have the details on them.
Is it 2006?
It's a 2006, I'm sorry. And it's still holding that value. The, we did get not only the San Antonio River Authority's appraisal on it, their vendor that was selling them, the exact copy of that truck, did pay us a visit and talk to us, told us it was a great truck. We spoke with the maintenance department from the San Antonio River Authority, and they did give us nothing but praises on it. They actually don't want to sell it. They just have to, because they got, they purchased a brand-new one.
And San Antonio River Authority has actually been a good corporate partner with the city of Florisville. They've let us use this truck and similar trucks to them when we needed to have those emergencies. I can remember once up there by the high school, we had an emergency there, and then again, when we had our problems, before we were approved for, they brought out their vat truck and let us to use it for the sewer as well, on Goliath, when we were having those issues.
Any other questions, Council?
Yeah, so you didn't shop, so you didn't shop around?
Yes, we did have several demos come to the yard.
With the same, same make value and everything?
They're different, there's different brands. We spoke to, I believe, three different ones. We had two demos onsite. We spoke to some at the conferences. And the cheapest, which was a three-yard, not the five-yard, it's a smaller combo truck, that one, they run, start around $200,000.
I understand that, but you got to compare apples to apples. You're comparing a brand-new one to a 2006 one, which is 15 years old?
If that's the same, same one?
Okay. Council, yes, Councilman Ortiz?
Yes, thank you, Ricky. Did EI attend that meeting with the vendors that...
Yes, it was taken to the yard. The majority of the guys were there. Most of the guys, Streets Department, the Water Department, and the Wastewater Department was there. I believe Parks was the only one that wasn't present for the demos. We did test, test out different versions of the truck with all the different perks that they have, and the best fit for us would be the five-yard larger truck.
Like, my question was, was EI there and did he approve it?
Yes, he got hands on it. He went to take a look at it. He popped the hood, looked at all the mileage. He checked, he checked it out. We did pay a visit to the San Antonio River Authority Yard, and he met with their mechanics as well, and they had their discussions regarding the truck and its history.
Great. Satisfied. Any other questions by the Council? Any citizens' comments? Okay? If none, oh. You'll have to come up, you'll have to come up to the microphone. Ms. Kiki, you'll, Mrs. Kiki. Mrs. Kiki, you'll have to come up to the microphone.
We talk about money all the time, everybody does. But the beauty of it is that you all have to stop to think of the input of some of us that are on limited income, very little, practically nothing, and yet, we want to pay our bills. But it doesn't matter to some of you all, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments?
Excuse me, I didn't understand what she was trying to say.
That's, that's, okay, you can go back and listen to the video on that one. Okay. If no other comments or questions, I will entertain a motion to...
How much would a new one cost?
Depending on what you need it for in applications, they do have different perks. Pressure washers. Used, it's pretty difficult to get the general price, but we're looking at $200,000 to $300,000 used for this application.
And she's asking for a new one?
No, this is a used one.
I know, but she's asking...
I'm sorry, the new one's about $400,000, $450,000.
Being, being the River Authority, they're not used near as hard as the city of San Antonio's...
No, and actually, they do have two.
That's the good thing about this one, it's very low hours on it. It's not the miles, it's the hours. And for the money, it's well worth the price.
Yes.
Just a good, plus, the River Authority gives it to anybody on their county borders, the river, they get a very good discount.
Yes, and I believe it was the Community Assistance Department that was assisting us with this, with this transition of purchasing it.
It's excellent, excellent deal.
If no other comments, I will entertain a motion.
I move. I move.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilman Johns to approve the purchase of a vat truck for water and wastewater. I also have a second by Councilwoman Kent 2. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those, okay, 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Ricky.
Thank you.
Moving on to 4B, consideration and action to request approval to, excuse me, request to approve street closures for the Knights of Columbus for their March for Life. Councilman Jimenez, this is your item on the agenda.
Down sponsor the Knights of Columbus for their walk for life.
Okay, we have two members of the Knights here. If you would, gentlemen, state your names and kind of give us a night, give us information on the event that you will be having.
My name is Marshall Castro.
My name is Joe Rodriguez.
We're the Knights of Columbus Council, 6641, here in Florisville, with San Antonio Archdiocese. We want, request permission to the closest streets on October 6th to have our Ninth Annual Respectful Life March. It'll be a peaceful, reverent, prayerful march. It'll be from the Knights of Columbus Hall, down 4th Street, down in front of the courthouse, and then up to Sacred Heart Church, where we then have a mass. We've already spoken with the city police department, and we do have security that they can follow us and be there for us, so that's already covered also.
The route is up, start at the Knights of Columbus, then go up to the D Street corner, take a right, I understand?
Yes, ma'am.
And then go up to 4th Street?
4th Street.
And then take 4th Street up to Trail to the church? If there's any question? Okay.
Do we have to inform somebody from the, state just something with us?
We usually don't close the street. We usually just done it with a police escort, as long as we had a police escort, I already looked into that, and as long as we have a police escort, we usually don't close the street. We usually have like three or four officers that help with the cars.
Okay. Any other, any other questions by my councilmembers?
Are you going down the county highway? Is that the one you're closing?
No, 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 it's all in downtown Floris.
All in downtown? So, it looks like you're going down 181.
No, they're going up on Court.
Trail, okay.
Sure.
The map's a little hard to read, so I apologize.
Draw lines. I don't see why there should be a problem.
No, it's, the main road would be 4th Street from the courthouse down to Pass Vineyards, up to Trail, and then taking a left down Trail to Sacred Heart Church. up to Trail, and then taking a left down Trail to Sacred Heart Church. So, you actually, do you need the streets closed, or no?
No, we need to get the police escort, or the police escort, and we've already spoken to the chief already about it.
Like a funeral service.
And we're going to get him the, the details and some of that.
Okay.